I'll call the August 16th meeting of the common council to order, and would you please call the roll?
Councillor Olson.
Here.
Councillor Tom Fennessy.
Here.
Councillor Bender.
Here.
Councillor Sweeney.
Here.
Councillor Brett Fennessy.
Here.
Councillor Garfield.
Here.
Councillor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Herrick.
Here.
Councillor Kern.
Here.
And Councillor Dahlbeck.
Here.
Recognizing quorum, I'll ask for consideration of the minutes from the August 2nd regular council meeting.
All considered.
Heard the motion, a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item six is the consent agenda.
Motion approved, second.
Heard the motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item 7.1, business by department heads, planning director, circus requesting authority to purchase the land and building located at 524 Jackson Street in order to mitigate flooding issues associated with the property.
Motion approved, second.
Heard the motion, a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is recommending to fully fund all grants and donations to various organizations at 2016 levels for 2017 with the requirement all recipient organizations provide a complete accounting for all funds provided by the city to ensure compliance.
Only for most approve.
Motion, second. Discussion, Councillor Sweeney.
Thank you. I'd like to refer that back to the finance because of the, not in terms of the level of funding, I'm more concerned about the complete account, accounting. I don't know what that term means. I think we should further define that and give the people that have to submit that to us a clear understanding of what we need. Everybody would have a different, in my opinion, it would have a different interpretation if it says complete accounting. So I would like to refer back to the finance committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to refer back to finance. All, Councillor Garfield.
Councillor Bender was first.
I'm sorry?
I was first.
Oh, Councillor Bender, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, Bruce, I already sent you a thank you email for this, and thank you so much because there are many nonprofits that barely, barely, barely squeeze by, and I happen to be on the board as a regular public member of Douglas County Historical Society, and we are very, very thankful. We will be able to keep the doors open because of that. And I just think, I just think it's a good idea, and accounting is whatever we say accounting is, and of course, that could be done as an after the fact.
Thank you. I should have stated that referral is not, does not allow discussion, so.
Okay.
I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Could you call the roll, please?
Repeat the question, please?
The motion is to refer back to the finance committee.
Okay.
Councillor Olson.
Yes.
Councillor Tom Fennessy.
No.
Councillor Bender.
No.
Councillor Sweeney.
Yes.
Councillor Brett Fennessy.
Yes.
Councillor Garfield.
No.
Councillor Ludwig.
Yes.
Councillor Herrick.
Yes.
Councillor Kern.
Yes.
Councillor Dahlbeck.
Yes.
7.3, the motion passes.
Motion to refer passes.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by Better City Initiative requesting an advisory referendum question relating to local exposition district tax be placed on the November 8th, 2016 general election ballot.
Motion approved.
Second.
Heard a motion, a second to approve discussion. Councillor Sweeney?
I have some questions. I thought perhaps someone would be here from that organization.
Bruce, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Not to take away your thunder, are you going to make a presentation or just answer questions? I'm not just, I'm not.
Or a little bit of both. I would do a little bit of both.
All right, then, if you want to go first with your presentation, that would be fine.
Sure. Members of the council, I'm here this evening to ask for your permission and support in introducing this referendum in the November ballot election cycle for the purpose of going to our citizens and asking them, after we certainly have an 84-day sprint, to educate them relative to what this tool could mean for the city of Superior. That is something that's not been done in a small market in the state of Wisconsin before. Many of you know, we've been at this for three years, we've done market studies, we've come up with proof of concept plans. These are things that have worked elsewhere in the country and have revitalized towns to grow them to an income-based generating municipality. And so, this is the first in a three-step process, really, this advisory referendum. When we're successful in November, there's lots of work to be done all winter long down at the state legislature to get statutory change to the existing legislation. We would then have to come back in November, or in April, for a binding referendum with the goal of having the governor sign this privilege into the state budget in July for Superior to have its own small market exposition district. At that point, it still all comes back to you folks to establish the district once we've been granted the authority to have one. So again, this is the first in a multi-step process to get a tool authorized by the state of Wisconsin for us to do some large-scale redevelopment to redefine our downtown.
Councillor Sweeney?
Is this expedition district then going to be for the taxing purposes within the whole city of Superior?
Well, we are trying to craft the food and beverage portion to be citywide. In a true large-market exposition district, it has distinct boundaries.
Right.
It's very tight, but we recognize that we're not a major metropolitan area, and the original exposition district was designed for a major metropolitan area. But we think the idea is good, and we know that the city of Duluth 35 years ago had one way, one of two ways to flip the switch, and they went to their state legislature and got authorization to do some of the same things that will allow us to do within an exposition district. 35 years later, they have 3.5 million visitors and $10 million of annual tourism taxes funding their growth. So this is certainly a long, a long view initiative, and it's very exciting for the potential of our community to have a complementary focus in the region and to get our own piece of the pie. But in answer to your question, relative to the small impact it would have on local consumers who would choose to have prepared food and beverage in our restaurants, we're talking a nickel for every $10 would be the bulk of the local contribution to create $100 million of reinvestment in our downtown.
So it is the whole city?
We're hopeful it can be the whole city. Again, this all has to be, it all has to be written into the statutory changes.
I understand, but your idea, as we sit here today, is the whole city?
Yes, yes.
And Douglas County was in it at one time, are they not in, let's call it rural Douglas County, if you would?
Yes. Our challenge with Douglas County, and I've been before the Douglas County Unit of the Wisconsin Towns Association, I've gotten unanimous support to do this countywide, but in referendum strategy, we understand that the bulk of the food and beverage is consumed within the city. The bulk of the benefit will be for the city. Our numbers are based on countywide, but the county percentage of the numbers is quite small, so you run the risk of having, you know, with 84 days to educate, you run the risk of having uninformed county voters, or the attitude of, well, what's in it for me, I live out here, this is for Superior. So it's a matter of how efficient can we be to get this tool, you know, available to the city of Superior.
Okay. So the short answer is they're not in anymore?
They, we have taken them out.
Oh, you have taken?
Yes, yes.
Fine, thank you.
Yep.
And then my third question is, in terms of the location, the specific location of the proposed facility, is that, I basically know where it is, but is that private land or is that public land, and how are you going to acquire that? If it's private, there must be multiple units.
Yeah. Again, this is all proof of concept. Originally, when we talked about where could large-scale development happen in downtown Superior, we were talking about closer to the city center. With Jason's help, we were directed more down towards North Tower Avenue that way. We've determined that it needs about 10 to 12 acres. There is a mixture of unoccupied, commercial, vacant land, empty buildings, viable businesses, residences, rentals, there's a huge mix of it. We've identified the tax base is about $9 million of tax base. We realize that there would need to be a plan to see who's going to play and who's not going to play, and we'd obviously have to work around what's available. But at this point, you know, there is potential for it to be there, but it doesn't have to be there, and at the end of the day, it's up to our city to decide where they want this.
Sure. My only, my reason for asking that question, this is not eminent domain, so you have to deal with each individual owner, right?
Correct, correct. Yes, correct, yep.
So maybe we're jumping way ahead, but is there a timeframe on that?
That is jumping way ahead.
Okay.
When we started this journey, we didn't even know what an exposition district was. We chose this path because of necessity, and so, you know, that's where it is.
Okay. Then in this proposal, it says, the last sentence, part of the last sentence, lodging food beverages and consumption on the public and car rentals for the purpose of acquiring and managing exposition center facilities. What does that mean?
Well, our goal is to have the private sector manage these things. In a public-private partnership of this nature, generally, there are venues within a dynamic income generating city center that has elements to it that don't produce revenue. It's not our idea that the city should be in the business of managing any of this. We think they should have a choice of who does manage it, and certainly be able to RFP out and choose the best developers and best managers possible to do that. But the, really, the exposition district functionality is to create a revenue stream so that the district itself can bond and create that public capital that then will be able to bring in the private capital to make the whole project come together.
That's fine. My, my opposition to this, and I will state that, is threefold. First of all, I, I think we would be, if there's public financing, now you're telling me there will not be any public financing, is that accurate to say?
This has no municipal liability, back to the taxpayer, no.
Okay, all right. And so, there would be, my, that would alleviate my first and third fear, okay? We have to see that, but I, I'll take your word for it now. Trust but verify, okay. But my second of the three, then, is I don't know if this plan complex, if you would, is futuristic. I don't know if, I haven't done a lot of research, but some, I don't know if a cinema, a theater, a convention center, and a water park is the future of where we're going. Are water parks, and are these growing by leaps and bounds nationally, regionally? I don't know that. I have some, I did some initial work, and I'm more than wanting to see some information that you would present, or someone would present, that this is, I, as I sit here today, I don't think that's futuristic, but I may be totally wrong, I opt to be wrong.
Well, again, what we're trying to plug into is a very interdependent, dynamic entertainment district. I don't think water will ever go out of style, I don't think indoor recreation, particularly in our climate, will ever go out of style. We have an opportunity to complement Duluth and to drive considerable tournament play for soccer and lacrosse to the region. The movie theater entertainment piece of it, I don't think it's ever going to go away. In and of themselves, none of these would work, but it's a matter of piecing it together to make it an exciting district that then can bring the downtown urban living and the private enterprise retail back to the downtowns, where that is a popular thing with the millennials, and it's hard to keep their attention. Large employers are looking to have young workers stick in the region. They're very concerned about the workforce going forward. Where are the people going to come from? How do you recruit people up to our area and make them stick? And we all know we have wonderful natural resources around here, but we all know we all have climate to deal with too, and we have this, this need to experience things, to network with their friends. Possessions are not their world as much as it was ours. And so by putting together a concept of this nature, which is, which is working elsewhere, and again, the people we hooked our wagon to proved this out, and the mayor and those of us that went hogged in Utah, as political officials, over a 12-year period, brought $1.2 billion of redevelopment to a town of 60,000, and led the nation in job growth at 8,000 jobs his final year in office. And they're replicating this in other areas. And the reason they were able to bring those jobs to town is because they invested in themselves first, then they went out and handpicked the types of employers that they wanted to relocate, and they said, look, we've prepared a place for you. We think your workforce will want to live here for the long haul. That's job stability, that's employment stability, and that's what we're trying to tap into. I can't see the future, no more than you can, but it's the effort that matters, and doing nothing will not get there, for sure.
Well, I would slightly disagree with your last statement. Effort is great, but a lot of people do a lot of effort and things don't work out too, so I think we have to do our due diligence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor Herrick.
Yeah, that comes after about a half a percent tax, then, is that correct, Bruce?
It's one-half of 1%.
One-half, 1%.
So a nickel for $10.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Garfield.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to a couple of things here. Councillor Sweeney had kind of raised the issue about the difficulty in maybe relocating some businesses or people that are residents in that area. Considering we're talking about a 12-acre area roughly, and it doesn't have to be fixed to one area, it doesn't other, it doesn't have to be continuous completely either, does it?
No.
Because you can build it around businesses that stay.
Yes, yes.
See, and I think that is very feasible, considering that at one time, the city housed over 100,000 people. We have the area to put large businesses in, work around existing businesses, and, you know, potentially relocate some folks that will probably be more than happy to leave, honestly. So that's one issue I wanted to talk about. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I, you know, I'm strongly in support of this plan because I feel that not only does this complex work well together with the four different parts that would be put into the downtown area, but it also works really well with the college we have. UWS is one of the most underutilized resources we have in this community in that there are a lot of young people here that every year could potentially make the decision to stay here and to become community members. Now, if you're under 21, there isn't a whole lot going on downtown that you might be very interested in. But not only are, you know, water parks and cinemas things that you can do, you know, when you're 18 as a new college student, you come here, but there are also jobs that you can have over the summer. And so I see college students becoming more invest, and also, I mean, that's two of our biggest areas, is what can we do to retain college students and attract people to this area, and what do we have that's family-friendly within the area, because we also have a lot of young families here that want things for their family. So I think it actually is going to address a lot of the cultural issues of what is our downtown about, and, you know, we've got other, we've got other small businesses right now that are becoming successful in the downtown area, but this complex could serve as a major anchor for other types of family-friendly business, businesses oriented towards college students, and just creating a more diverse downtown culture and a more robust downtown economy. I think, I think we have to, and no risk to the city, no financial liability, it's a good deal for us, but we have to be willing to take some steps here to try to put some real economic development in the downtown.
Councillor Bender.
Yes, thank you. And Bruce, I want to thank you for your leadership in this issue, and I've seen the presentation at least three times, if not more, and it's always been a very good presentation. I just have a couple of quick questions. What did the county, what did Douglas County vote on this? Yeah, I have a resolution of support from Douglas County. Okay, good. And that's. Unanimous. Well, that's good. Now, this would also be adjacent to the NLX station, if that ever takes place. Yes, yes. Well, it bolts, you know, and that's part of the beauty of where it's designed, is it connects to Saha, it could connect to that other station. You know, again, we're a family community, and, you know, Duluth has got some great things going on, but.
Yes, it do.
But we have an opportunity to design it to be very codependent and connected and easy to utilize. You know, there's lots of work to be done, but we really do have a great canvas to work with and a great community to move it forward, if the citizens choose so. Perfect. The last one is, you know, you had spoken about the attractive elements that will be part of this, a water park, a multiplex cinema, probably some other, an indoor field house, which is sorely needed in this area, and just looking at what happens every weekend at the baseball field at the high school, this is going to be very, it's going to be insanely popular, so I think that's good. And there is a socioeconomic theory called DINKs, dual incomes, no kids, and I'm sure you've heard that, you've heard me say that before, and this is the way that we would attract them. So thanks again, I really appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say one thing, build it and they will come.
Here, here.
Councillor Olson?
Bruce, I got a couple of questions. When, with the referendum that we're looking to have put on the ballot, and being just an advisory referendum, there isn't anything in stage one that the state is going to be looking for other than the referendum?
Well.
The result of the referendum?
Well, again, we hooked our wagon to people who are in the know relative to this, and utilizing Bill McCosh and Capital Consultants to, to help us draft the language. So they, they have the language, they drafted it for us the way they know the state would want us, what they would want to see in an advisory referendum. And regardless of the order in which, because, you know, the city worked on the order of the language, and that, that's fine, the language is in there that the state would want to see, at least at the advisory form. It has to get, and when they get to the binding referendum, it has to get more detailed.
Okay, and that's where I'm going with that. So if, if the advisory referendum goes through and we get to the point in, you would have it on the spring ballot, is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so your timeframe, not only for the advisory referendum, is between now and November, and then a very short period of time to, I guess the most important thing for me is that the community is educated on what the actual, if there is any burden at all, on the city of Superior taxpayers. I'm assuming we're looking at user tax.
It's a consumption-based food and beverage, prepared food and beverage tax.
Okay.
And right now, you pay 2.75% on, when you go to Duluth, and a lot of us do. And this is, you know, one-half of 1% for the purposes of economic redevelopment.
Okay.
Dan, can I call back Tom quick before you continue on?
Certainly.
He was disconnected.
Maybe he hung up.
No, he sent a message.
Where is he, Bruce? Is he roaming?
I don't know.
Can you hear us?
Terry, you might ask Tom if he has any questions.
All right. All right. Tom's back on.
Okay, and then just, just to continue, I would like to direct a question to Gene down the road, always. The city is capable of being a partner in this? We have some state rules, guidelines for bonding purposes, and we also have a city guideline that we have to go by?
That's correct. We have a couple of things that we need to, that will set the maximum when we're talking about debt for the city, and we have a statutory limit, and that is that the 5% of the value of the community, that's what the state says, your debt cannot exceed that amount. But we also have a city debt policy that's more restrictive than that to maintain our bond rating, and that is a 3% of the value of the community. So right now, we're well below our statutory limit of 5%, and as far as unused borrowing capacity, comparing it to the 3% of our, for the debt policy, we've got borrowing capacity of about $6.2 million.
But keep in mind, the district is the obligor here, so the district has taxing powers on its own and bonding on its own, it does not impact municipal limits.
Yep, okay. And the reason I bring that up is I think it's important, moving forward, if this does move forward, that everybody, there may be some confusion, what's the total cost of this now? I know it's gone.
About 100 million.
So we're looking at 100 million?
But, yeah, the 30 million would be the public, 30 to 33 million, the public. If it evolves the way we've done a proof of concept analysis of, it could evolve differently. You know, again, it all comes back to you to decide, along with our citizens, where we want to go, how we want to define this community. We're just trying to prove out concept here.
Yep.
And find the tools to do it.
Okay. No, that's good. Mayor, if I could, then, if anybody else has any questions, I would entertain them first, but then I would like to close with the.
I'm sorry, Councillor, I didn't hear you.
If anybody else has any questions, when they're done, I would like to propose something.
I'll take a motion for that.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mayor, could I ask a question? I have a, it's a big picture question, and I'm working with the numbers, I've been working with Adam Hughes from Better Cities, and so all the numbers that I have are from him, and not just the mile high, but say, going five miles high. So the, the concept is that all of these projects together total roughly $100 million. And the goal is to have private contribution through developers of roughly 2/3 of that, or 65 million. So then that leaves 34 million, and when I asked Adam what the exposition district could contribute for bonding, he said 10 million, so that still leaves 20-some million-dollar gap. That would be city.
Yeah, that's, right, no, no, that comes through additional TIF and super TIF statutory changes that we will bake into the exposition district. You've got a tremendous amount of tax increment coming off of these, you're going to build, you know, with $100 million worth of investments, you're going to maybe have tax assessed value of $65 million. You know, we want that tax increment committed back to the project to retire the debt.
Correct. Correct.
So, yeah, all it has to stack.
But it, but it's still, it's still a city tax increment district. That would be, the anticipation is that that tax increment district issues those bonds. And so that's a city tax increment district.
And we understand that it comes through the exposition district as its separate governmental entity.
Okay, because that's, it's just very different than what Adam gave me.
Sure, it is, it is. It's very complex, and we want to draw it upright, and we want to use, you know, pros who have done it before to help us with that. But the district language, the legislative language, does not tie back to municipal liability.
Counselor Sweeney.
Then I have a question for Gene. Your interpretation is obviously different than gentleman's.
I have, I, we've never done an expo district, so this is new.
Okay.
But I've never heard of a tax increment district that is anything other than the city's liability.
So how many in the state are there of this exposition? Milwaukee is the only one that has?
Yeah, Milwaukee, Milwaukee is what it was designed for, and the Titletown District in Green Bay is the next one, but it's a little bit different in that the Green Bay Packers are doing the financing, but through the exposition district, again, legislation modification, they're allowing them to recoup their investment through this type of entity. So we're crafting new territory here to take this and make it applicable to a small market.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just extremely concerned of the liability to the city.
It'll all be in your hands whether or not you take that liability on, if there is any.
Thank you.
Counselor Delbeck.
My question is for Gene. What are you saying, that we can't afford this, is what you're saying, is that if it goes?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is I think there needs to be clear understanding of what the exposition district will be responsible for bonding, because we've been told that if the exposition district issues the bonds, then the city taxpayers are not responsible for that if it goes, something goes south. But every tax increment district that we've done in the city, and from what I've been given, there's an expectation that there will be a tax increment district involved. That's the city issuing debt, and then the project develops, there's tax increment based on that new value, then that increment goes to repay the bonds. So the way that it has been presented to me is that there is an expectation of a tax increment district. And bonds, these are not my numbers, this comes from--
Right, that's right.
--better cities.
Yeah. That's part of the capital stack, bonding, yep.
Counselor Hare.
Yeah, what's the strategy for educating everybody on this in the next few days?
Well, it's going to cost a lot of money. I got 84 days. We've already done polling, and we've got a strategy. And, I mean, it's a huge effort, huge effort to try and educate the public on what this means.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion before I turn it back to Counselor Olson? Counselor Sweeney?
I just got to keep going back to this. You say that your understanding is there is no tax liability to the city, okay?
Through the exposition district legislation, yes.
Right. And so in the one that exists in the city of Milwaukee, have you massaged that, is that true in that?
It is.
Okay. And so I understand the first step is to go work with the state, legislature, whoever you're going to work with, and then to get that in. But that's my deep concern, and I'm not totally confident that that's the way it is right now, so, thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Did Tom have anything?
Tom, do you have anything to say?
No, not you. Tom Fantasy.
Counselor Fantasy?
Sit down, Anderson.
Counselor Fantasy? Tom Fantasy?
Oh, sorry, I had an interview with Tom. No, I heard everything from the internet.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Olson.
A lot of the questions and concerns that I have had, everybody has done a fantastic job of bringing them forward. And Bruce, thank you. I know this has been a long, daunting task, and hopefully, we can get somewhere with it. What I would like to propose is a friendly amendment to the resolution that we have in front of us. Everybody got their pad? So in the resolution, we start up on top, and it's introduced by Better City Initiative, and you have a whereas, you have another whereas, and then it is the actual referendum. So what I'm proposing as an amendment, that in between the end of the referendum and where it says now, therefore, be it resolved, I would like to amend the resolution to include, now, therefore, be it resolved, if such legislation authorizing a local exposition district tax is approved, the city will work with Better City Superior to create a TIF district for its project to finance eligible tax increment once there is a viable development. Now, that means that we have to have something in order for us to create this TIF district. We have to see a result in some form, shape, manner, whatever. And then moving on, that such tax increment incentives would be payable on as a pay-as-you-go basis, and this is the important thing that I think for the citizens to understand in the education, that the city will not issue general obligation promissory notes or revenue bonds to finance any part of the Better City of Superior project. Bruce, you pretty much explained everything with the exposition district taking that out, so. And then finally, then, just to change the language in the resolution, go back to the bottom, but then have it read, be it further resolved, the common council directs the city clerk to place the advisory referendum question on the November 8, 2016 general election ballot. So I'm adding a little meat to the resolution, which pretty much ensures us that we'd be a partner in this with a TIF district, make sure that we've got a development that we can see through attrition, or not attrition, fruition-- [laughter] --and then, we're going to retire the thing before it starts. And then, and then do this as a pay-as-you-go. So there is somewhat of a guarantee for the city of Superior, if you want to call it a guarantee. And if the exposition district language states otherwise, like you stated, that this is nothing more than just a little bit of fluff to the resolution. And I would happily answer any questions from the council, if that's okay with--
Terry, who made the motion in the second?
Warren Bender made the motion, and Esther Dalbeck seconded it.
Well, I would accept a friendly amendment.
There's no, we need a second--
I would accept the amendment, friendly or other one.
She needs a second for the amendment.
Amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Heard a motion at second to amend the resolution as described. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And now we need a motion to approve the referendum.
Motion to approve.
Heard a motion at second, multiple, to approve. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the fire department amending Chapter 104, Section 273, property maintenance and housing code, premise identification.
Motion approved. Second.
Heard a motion at second to approve. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
11.2 is an ordinance introduced by the fire department amending Chapter 54, fire prevention and protection.
Motion approved.
Heard a motion of multiple seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Approved.
11.3, an ordinance introduced by city attorney Perle amending Section 1-14 citations and deposits for violation of certain provisions of the city code of ordinances.
Motion approved.
Heard a motion at second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. If no further business come before this body, we will stand adjourned.